I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you can please be silent for a moment, please. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation under God.
This is all the propriety and justice of our law. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public ... board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library.
Congratulations. Next up, congratulations to our West Milford High School Theater Arts Program. They recently had a great year, and it culminated just this past week, two weeks ago rather, when they won a whole bunch of awards. So the Paper Mill Playhouse Rising Star Awards are modeled after Broadway's Tony Award. Paper Mill Playhouse Rising Star Awards were created in 1996 to encourage and reward exceptional accomplishments in the production of New Jersey high school musicals. The Rising Star Awards is a national high school recognition program that has been replicated in several regions nationwide with the Paper Mill Playhouse assistance. Winners for the Paper Mill leading female and male performers go on to compete at the National High School Musical Theater Awards presented by the Broadway Foundation. We had seven nominations this year. Our West Milford High School Theater Arts cast and crew of the March production of Anastasia, including outstanding overall production of a musical. Individual nominations: Mia Grazzuti for Best Outstanding Leading Performer in a Female Role for the role of Anastasia; Jason Pritchett for Best Outstanding Leading Performer in a Male Role for the role of Dimitri; Jayden Becker for Outstanding Performance by a Featured Ensemble Member for the role of Count Polotop. We also were nominated for Outstanding Achievement in Choreography and Staging. Amanda Del Jacomo and Landon Frey were nominated in the category of Student Achievement. Mrs. Burns also received an honorable mention for Outstanding Achievement by a Teacher/ Director, and an honorable mention was received for the costumes. The cast will perform a number for the show on the Paper Mill stage along with performances from Mia Grazzuti and Jason Pritchett.
You don't have to say it all over again, because Nate is in here. So Nate's working on it.
For Best Outstanding Leading Performer in a Female Role for the role of Anastasia; Jason Pritchett for Best Outstanding Leading Performer in a Male Role for the role of Dimitri; Jayden Becker for Outstanding Performance by a Featured Ensemble Member for the role of Count Polotop; Outstanding Achievement in Choreography and Staging; Amanda Del Jacomo and Landon Frey were nominated in the category of Student Achievement. Mrs. Burns received an honorable mention in Outstanding Achievement by a Teacher/ Director, and an honorable mention was received for the costumes. The cast will perform a number from the show on the Paper Mill stage along with performances from Mia Grazzuti and Jason Pritchett, and their final awards will be announced June 6th at the Paper Mill Playhouse, so good luck to everybody. And additionally, on May 26th, three of our theater arts students will be receiving a Governor's Award at the Ceremony in Trenton. Sofia Asiego and Cara Gaddish will be receiving one for their first-place win at the Speech and Theater Association of New Jersey Annual State Theater Competition for Pairs. Victoria Ebencik will receive two Governor Awards for her senior scholarship monologue win and her first place in dramatic monologues. Victoria was also chosen to perform her senior scholarship monologue for the ceremony. The Governor's Awards are held at the War Memorial Theater in Trenton, and only 100 students from the entire state receive these awards. So congratulations.
What about the flag?
Oh, congratulations to our Boys Across team. This past weekend, they won their first-ever State County Championship in Boys Across with a victory over Wayne Hills at Wayne Valley, neutral site. So congratulations to Coach Stoll, his whole staff, and all the boys, the first ever. And just a few minutes ago, it's why Nate was late here, we had an extra inning win at Killgall Field for the baseball team. They beat Potten Lakes 3-2 in eight innings in the county tournament, I believe it was the quarterfinals. So the baseball team advances to the semifinals in a few days. So good luck to them and all of our spin athletes.
Thank you, and congratulations to everyone. His time is public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the Chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes per a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comments limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during the public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged, and the Board and the Administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have a specific legal right afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The Board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments and the right of the legal rights of those afforded, of those affected and identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Mrs. Francisco, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we have Mr. Sidewitz, former trustee, and Kristi Clay.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Should I sign first or second? After that.
I think you're first.
No, I mean, should I sign right now?
You can. I left the space for you.
Oh, great. And done. All right. Good evening, Board, good evening, Administrators. All of you, Administrators, and Board members alike, sit in unenviable positions. Tonight, this Board will be making a decision that sets the stage for a series of painful decisions that will be made without haste, that need to be made without haste in order to save the district. Your first painful decision stems from the Board's show solidarity on April 26th with its nine-to-zero budget failure that leads us to tonight. I understand your concerns about the firing of teachers while seeing a simultaneous increase in administrative salaries. As noble as the solidarity was new principle, my hope is that this Board looks beyond this hill to die on and votes in favor of the budget. The S2 state aid cuts that began in the 2008-2009 school year will now start to see their full devastating effects on our school district. In my opinion, the Board is incredibly late in preparing for those effects, and if this budget fails tonight, and if you wish to lose your independence for an indefinite period of time through a state-appointed monitor, you rest assured that you will be further placed in the school district than jeopardy. Furthermore, the items that you're fighting against will more than likely be the items that will be approved by the monitor anyway. We all saw the facts and figures that Dr. Anemo presented to you. These are two more, there are two more years of state aid reduction, which will lead us from a budget that was once supported through 25% state aid, and if this projection is all true, will lead to about 5% in the 2024-25 budget. Those millions of dollars that are guaranteed to be removed will only be replaced by a $1.17 million annual increase through the general tax levy. Using simple arithmetic, it's obvious that the district is headed toward insurmountable deficits. Within all the madness that COVID-19 caused, this Board had unforeseen but fortunate circumstance. Despite having another round of state aid cuts, the district saw itself with a significant monetary windfall because its operational expenses saw an incredible decrease, and the federal government directed money towards school districts. It allowed for the West Milford School District to have a buffer year before it started to face what you have now. We all heard Ms. Francisco clearly state that this budget is being supported by a one-time $4 million excess fund balance that resulted after 2020-2021. By June 30th, 2022, your administration is probably going to need help lifting their jaws off the floor because it's going to become more and more evident that you will not only be losing capital reserve and maintenance reserve, which you may not have it. The bigger problem is your excess fund balance at the end of the year, basically your checking account. You will be close to not having enough cash flow to managing the basic operations of a district. The battle that was fought on April 26th was fought in an effort to save several teachers by using the proposed increase in administrative costs for them. I hope you see beyond this short-term effort. In the very near future, your battles will consist of how do you not cut so many teachers? They will also consist of what programs you'll cut, which ones you'll save, and for how long you'll save them for. You'll have to decide what capital projects are the most important ones and which ones you'll need to kick down the road. As this budget leads to the necessity of restructuring the district, aka closing schools, the scorn that I faced in my time as a Board Member may pale in comparison to what you're going to face. However, my hope is that you take tonight as an opportunity to build a framework for future fiscal discussions, and that you strengthen your resolve to make those difficult choices now in order to save the district. First, it's imperative that you pass this budget tonight. Don't let your good intentions result in poor consequences. Don't lose your independence. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Clay?
Hi, everyone. I'm Kristi Clay. For those of you who don't know me, I teach the multiple disabilities class at Maple Road. I coach our Special Olympics and Unified Sports teams, and am a leader on our school and district character of education committees. My daughter will be a kindergartner next year, and I have a student who's in the 18-21 Transition Program. I feel very passionately about the growth of our special education program in inclusion and teaching all of our learners academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally throughout our West Milford district. I love this district, and I love my career here. During Black History Month, in Trisha Kane-Greene's fifth-grade classroom with Caitlin Helter, our school social worker, we collaboratively taught about civil rights, segregation, inclusion, bias, and fairness, amongst other things. The co-taught lesson infused reading with character education, while students with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities were challenged to really relate to these terms. Students with different backgrounds learned together and respected each other's voices and thoughts. The lesson was highly differentiated, completely inclusive, and was equally valuable and meaningful to the students and the staff in the classroom, as we all know a way to connect to such themes. Students were driving their own instruction forward as they asked the hard questions and they activated their schema about what they knew on the topic. When it came up, some couldn't believe that there was a time where students with disabilities were also not allowed to attend the same classrooms or schools as others. They expressed verbal appreciation that they are in a diverse classroom, and as young as fifth grade, they could list reason why they felt as though it was meaningful. As I often do, I left the classroom feeling inspired by the students' young minds and kind hearts. Lessons like this are the norm at Maple Road, and I imagine, as we have many highly qualified teachers and truly specialized programs throughout our district, that this is the norm in all of our schools. Our teachers, support staff, and administration have inclusive vision. Though I'm good for an off-the-cuff TED talk when discussing the importance of inclusion, my purpose for speaking today is in support of our budget. Specifically, I'd like to speak to the Board members who may have had their mind made up before coming here tonight. Please have an open mind and consider that each person speaking has something that could change your mind. That's what I've learned to do in this district: listen, collaborate, and though I'm as strong-willed and voiced as many of you, I adapt and change when I hear valuable opinions of those I trust. I'm standing here as a person I believe you can trust, someone who cares deeply about these kids and about this district. Some districts still have students with disabilities learning separate from their peers. Your reaction to that should be one of shock and appall, as that would have been the reaction of Mrs. Gray's fifth graders had I shared that with them. West Milford is so far from that closed-minded philosophy for many years now. We need the specialized programs, the educated teachers, the passionate administrators, and we need it to be provided right here in West Milford. We need to provide the least restrictive environment for students with the correct supports, and we need to do it with a vision and a plan. It's never okay for me to hear that we were able to best serve our students in an out-of-district placement because we didn't have a place for that child within our own district. Of course, there are exceptions to this rule, but if we want to teach children to live, work, communicate, and have friendships within our community, we need to teach, talk to, and educate them here in our community. And let's not forget how many students we've already brought back with that mission in mind. We cannot do this without a supported budget, and we cannot afford any more of our department to be cut or dismissed. West Milford has been able to achieve so much growth in our specialized classes. I see the change. Our specialized programs with our specifically trained staff make a difference for the entire student body, not just the student with an IEP. We need to tweak what we have and move forward. What we have is something good. We need to ask questions about what's needed. Dr. McQuade is one of the most knowledgeable people I know, and she's sitting right here on your Board. Have you asked her what's needed to support the continued growth in our least restrictive environments, in our multiple disabilities, our ABA, LLD, BD, 18-21, preschool, and all of our programs that focus on the needs of the unique learner and focus on getting students access to their peers in a way that's educationally sound and with a strong philosophy behind it? We can't just push students forward without support. I have heard a lot of you saying what we need. We need to listen to our teachers about what they need, and we need to collaborate in a way that's heard from both ends. We need to lift each other up. We need to think of each student like they're personally important to us, and the more that we do that, the more easily we will teach students to do the same. We need to pass this proposed budget and vote yes, and then we need to continue to grow. Maybe we need to hit restart in some areas, but not rewind.
I have to stop you.
Last line: We cannot go backward. Let's band together and move forward.
Thank you. Is anyone else signed up? There's two in there. Whoever's next, if they're on the list, they know.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cheryl News, and I am a school psychologist in the West Milford Elementary Child 18 for over 20 years. As I speak tonight, I am also speaking on behalf of the dedicated, hard-working, and most supportive coworkers who I have the pleasure to work with each and every day in the elementary child placement office. I am speaking specifically to the motion of the budget and also personnel number 18. I will begin by discussing some data regarding the student special education population in West Milford. According to my records, there are 712 special education students enrolled in the West Milford Township School District. Twenty-six of these students are attending out-of-district placements. In 2014, the out-of-district student numbers were 75. So what does all of this mean? It means that we are case-managing students with significant needs within our own school district. Our school leadership serves close to 150 self-contained students in variety of programs. This means that we are not only servicing the students, we are also the sounding board for their parents, who rightfully so, have many questions and concerns that require our attention. This also means that we need access to our special education administrators, both the director and supervisor, in order to provide information to the parents in a timely fashion. We also may need their presence at meetings in order to clarify district policies and procedures, as well as answer any questions that need administrative input. Presently, it is challenging to do all of these things, as you can imagine that Dr. McQuade and Mrs. Pierceall cannot be split into several different pieces in order to address these matters. I'm here to advocate for both the director of special services position and supervisor of special services position. Strong, highly qualified, and easily acceptable administrators that are placed at the top of the department and turn make for competitive, appropriate programs within the school district. If this department does not have all of the necessary appropriate pieces in place, then we cannot provide these services that include special education programs that are appropriately stepped, and access to administrators for facilitation purposes. This will leave us no choice but to look elsewhere in order to appropriately educate these students, costing the district additional funds that could be kept within the district, continuing to provide the services for these students. Furthermore, parents who are dissatisfied with their child's program in the district will have no other choice but to file for mediation or de-process. This leads to additional attorney costs that the district will have to provide. Our special services administrators look to resolve issues with parents all the time. On a personal note, Mrs. Pierceall has made herself available on a bi-monthly basis in order to meet with each of our teams to discuss any issues or cases that require more immediate attention. This has proven to be most effective in being able to collaborate and generate responses so we can provide what is needed for teachers or other staff members, students, and their parents. Mrs. Pierceall has attended many IEP meetings with our teams and has helped collaborate with both staff and parents to ensure an effective outcome. She is well-versed in special education code and compliance, as well as empathetic and in touch with the needs of the parents and teachers in this district. She is extremely responsive to our needs as a special education department and helps clarify any matters that need clarification in her physical and mental time. She is a positive asset to our department and has helped our stakeholders in so many ways, many of them behind the scenes. We thank her for all the hard work and dedication that she has given the special education department, and we are grateful for her dedication, time, effort, and support she puts into her work. Her efforts truly show, and we want the Board of Education to know how Mrs. Pierceall gives 120% in her will here as supervisor of special education. And I thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Do you have to speak? Yeah, she's... Has anyone got a question? Caitlin, you're on the list, you already signed up. Let's let Caitlin speak, and then you can move.
Good evening. Citing the CPAG manual produced by the Span Start Project, by definition, a CPAG is a parent advisory group. Best practices call for a parent-driven process that works closely with schools and the larger community. Parents can offer input and strategic solutions that help schools overcome challenges and make decisions related to budgets and resource priorities for special education programs and services. When parents are trusted and valued as advisors, they are empowered to advocate for changes that can result in positive outcomes for all stakeholders and are less likely to feel like isolated outsiders trying to fight the system. Parents and school leaders, by establishing sustained positive relationships, can work together in the best interest of students. That being said, we have come here tonight to address the Board as part of our district CPAG. We are expecting the Board to support the budget in the area of special needs. If the Board likes saving money by not putting the students in out-of-district placements, then you need to support those students in the special services that they need in the district. Our district has worked hard to create, grow, and sustain programs for our students. COVID has not been kind to any of our children, but our programs have taken its fair share of the hit. We foresee more struggles to come with the turnover of staff, as well as the budget cuts we are facing. Having teachers, but also administrators, being pulled into too many different roles and struggling with their workload is not going to help around. It trickles down to our children, they are the most affected. We are asking the Board to fulfill its obligation to provide appropriate staffing for our special needs population. This will provide our students with the free and appropriate public education that they are legally entitled to and that you, the Board, are legally obligated to provide our children with. We are asking that you pass the budget. Thank you.
Good evening.
Your name, please.
Larissa Heinzinger. So my name is Larissa Heinzinger. I've been employed by the district as a special educator for 21 years. During the past school year, I was able to seamlessly transition from my longstanding position at the high school to Highlander Academy. And for those of you who know me, know that I was not happy about the transfer. This positive transition, however, is what has driven me to stand here today with my colleagues to speak on behalf of special services and discuss the profound impact Mrs. Pierceall has had on our Highlander Academy team. It is our understanding that the special education advisory position may be cut due to the budget restraints. We request that you reconsider due to the negative ramifications it will have on special services, including programs, staff, and, most importantly, the students. Although there has been some discussion about restructuring Mrs. Pierceall's duties and responsibilities among several other employees, we do not believe this would be in the best interest of the students that we serve. Mrs. Pierceall is an influential figure at Highlander Academy, as well as providing support and guidance to all programs across the district. Her calming and consistent presence, in addition to her rapport with students, parents, and staff, has become the foundation at Highlander Academy. Since the inception of the program, high staff and supervisory turnover left the program very vulnerable and unable to meet the district's mission. However, since having consistent leadership, many positive initiatives have proven to be beneficial. Mrs. Pierceall recognizes that each student is an individual with unique educational and emotional needs that can't be met with a one-size-fits-all program. Her restorative, rather than punitive, practices empower teachers with more effective ways to build relationships and reach students who are struggling. Mrs. Pierceall has helped to foster a committed team of faculty and staff who rely on her direction and legal expertise surrounding special education. Highlander Academy has prospered under Mrs. Pierceall's leadership, especially with the addition of two tuition students. As the program continues to grow, additional tuition students will allow for more revenue for the district. However, the loss of her position will pose an issue in soliciting those additional students. Mrs. Pierceall's leadership also allows us to provide a stable learning environment for some of our more challenging students within the district, thus saving out of district costs. Mrs. Pierceall's crisis prevention intervention expertise allows for an important skill set and specialized lens to meet the individualized needs of students. She fosters students' emotional, intellectual, social, and physical maturity while creating a positive school climate based on mutual respect and responsibility. This stems from her commitment to the community in which she was raised, a community that has always rallied behind special services. If part of our district's mission is, and I quote, "to continue to identify, enhance, and monitor fiscal practices that enable the district to maximize efficiency," then one would think that eliminating such an integral part of our school community would not be in the best interest of the district or those that we serve, the students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, everybody. My name is Helen Frank. I teach a lot of videoing. I work in the Board Office. I am Dr. McQuade's assistant, and I also get the pleasure of working with you. I made the decision to I made the decision to come tonight on my own. And just to give you a little bit of my background, I worked 20 years downtown New York in finance and personnel before I got into education, and I am a New Jersey certified teacher. And I've worked with special needs children for many years in the autism classroom as an aide. So I have a pretty big background. My duties at the board are administratively to support Dr. McQuade and the district, but my duties also include assisting in supporting the special services supervisor, Mrs. Pierceall. She comes to me, we work on ongoing projects, budgeting, calendar, hiring, ESWI, and general administrative needs. She is extremely professional, she's compassionate, and highly capable. As a supervisor whose responsibilities cover preschool through 21 years of age, she works closely with parents, case managers, teachers, and administrative staff. Her calendar is filled with meetings. I mean, I look at it, and I'm like, how the heck is she going to do this? She has evaluation meetings, reevaluation meetings, staffing, parent meetings. And she does it with a smile, and she doesn't give up. So it's... Her day is busy, busy, and she just does it. She also is a fully certified crisis prevention specialist and trained for our district. I don't know if everybody knows what that means, but if a child is having an emotional crisis or behavioral crisis, she is trained to help those children and intervene so the students do not harm themselves, or they don't harm a teacher or administrator. And she's taught many classes to our CST members, teachers, and special class aides about crisis prevention. Since I started in 2015, we've had several supervisors. Dr. McQuade was promoted to director just before I came, and we had an interim supervisor for a short while. We hired a highly qualified candidate, and he stayed for a year until his former employer recruited him back for more money and less responsibility. Since West Milford is so large, and its supervisor position oversees so much, it is difficult to sell this position. The next supervisor we hired stayed for a year, but then advanced on to a director position in another town. Then an internal staff member was recommended, but the board voted no for her to fill the position. It took a long while to find a highly qualified candidate, and we were fortunate to hire Mrs. Pierceall, a highly qualified candidate with experience who wanted to be in West Milford and was willing to take on such a large school district. Dr. McQuade and Mrs. Pierceall work really well together. They support students with special needs. It is extremely important for the district that the supervisor and the director have a professional relationship that supports one another for the sake of the approximately 700 students who are under the special services umbrella. If we lose Mrs. Pierceall as supervisor, the department once again will be set back in progressing forward. It will be the students who will suffer most. The amount of specialized oversight that is required for the multiple programs we have for students that return to district and end the IEP information within the state guidelines is immense and intense. She obviously is highly prided by her peers, as seen by the staff that are here to support her. She is devoted to this district and our students. She is highly regarded by administration, as well... as shown, sorry, as shown by the agenda motion to rehire her for the '22, '23 school year. So it begs the question, why is there any hesitation with rehiring her? Please do not take support away from our most vulnerable population of students. And please vote yes to Agenda Item 19 tonight, as Mrs. Pierceall has earned her position here, has supported West Milford's special needs students with compassion, and professionalism, and diligence. She deserves to stay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Before we do that, we're at 30 minutes, so the board would need to extend, please.
If there's other speakers, sure.
I made a motion to extend.
You need a second. All those in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak?
See, now, I made a motion to close.
All those in favor? Motion for... To adopt the agenda as scheduled for you. Motion to adopt the agenda is presented. All those in favor? Operations and Finance. I'm sorry. Yes, once he makes a motion, we're going to go. It's a discussion, right, is that okay? Okay.
I'd like to move number one.
Second.
Discussion?
Has anything changed in this, or is it just a debate?
So we went over this in committee on Thursday. So it is the same budget presented two weeks ago. That's on your table now.
You went over this document on Thursday night?
We went over the budget in committee on Thursday.
Operations and Finance meeting, budget discussion was part of the agenda. There was really no budget discussion.
Well, there were only four members present for the discussion.
So there was no direction given to the administration, and whatever direction is given to us has to be at a public hearing.
But there was discussion, it's just that, yes. There were only four board members that were able to make the committee meetings on Thursday. All four board members sat through all three committees. So one flowed right into the other. There was much discussion through the night. I think that the other board members who were present will attest to that there was a large amount of discussion.
So does that mean that the Operations and Finance notes aren't correct?
I don't think they reflect fully what was discussed, because there were items discussed in personnel and in education that flowed into, that had to do with budget.
I'm happy to hear that, because it was extremely disappointing to get those notes today at, I'm not sure what time, definitely after 3:00 PM, and to make it seem as if there was no discussion on the budget. So I'm glad to hear that that wasn't true.
There wasn't a dollar amount on...
There was nothing.
I considered it to reduce.
There was no discussion that was going to change the resolution before you tonight, as far as the money that supports the overall budget or the tax levy?
I would agree that there was no money that we... The members of the board, and they can speak for themselves because they are present, did not ask to reduce the budget. That was not asked. If anybody that was present wants to say something, that's up to them.
You're right.
If they see it, if it reflected differently, please tell me that I'm speaking out of turn. Is there any discussion on the budget itself?
Before we move on, at the April 26 meeting, there were some things discussed publicly. We had discussed what were all the attorney fees, I remember was discussed. Not any one specific position, but something in the administrative budget. And so were those two things discussed. They couldn't take any action on anything. It has to be done at a public hearing. So if you wish to reduce something that was brought up, you have to have a motion, a second, and you have to have board support. So that's how you reduce the budget at a public hearing.
I believe that we discussed positions being reduced, but not the dollar amount being reduced. Because as you look ahead, there are a number of issues that are coming up. I don't know if I have my back. There are a number of issues coming up that are increases. I'll use an example of your hand carry. Our transportation costs, our 11 of our transportation runs have now doubled almost. So that's, you know, it's 200, it was 178 a day for the run. It's now, 11 of them are going up to $298 a day, and that's beyond fuel. So there's a number of things that are coming up where I think the... I will speak for myself, I think the other board members can speak for them. I think that we felt that the money that we could save in a reduction on a position could flow into that area. Our health care costs have now gone up. We budgeted for, what was it, 8%, and it went up to 18.
Right, and that's not anything that was never discussed. That's very public information.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying we discussed it.
So that should come as a surprise to anybody sitting at this table.
But that's the kind of cost that... That's what we were talking about with the budget. We asked for a position cut, we talked about the position cut. We also talked about not cutting the dollars in the budget, because we see that those dollars will be spent in other areas because of increases.
And that was discussed last, at the last hearing also, that you do transfers on a regular basis in order to cover costs. And so that's not a surprise to anyone at this table either.
So I guess what I'm saying, and I would look to you, is if we wanted to cut a position, this is the time where we could cut a position?
You could cut a position now and reduce the tax levy, or whatever document you need. Or you could pass the tax levy as it is and eliminate a position at a future date, or a future point in the agenda.
The most likely way of reducing the budget, or not approving, number one, you would have to say, we want to reduce the general fund by $1 million. And then it would be up to the administration to determine how to reduce the budget by $1 million. And then you would have to tell me whether you want me to take it out of the budget fund balance of $4 million, or whether you want me to reduce the tax levy. That's up to you.
Does anybody have any questions? And if the budget does not go to... If the budget doesn't pass tonight...
It goes to the county office, and they will look at our budget and decide what our budget would be for next year.
I'll ask again, does anybody have any other questions on the budget?
I just want to clarify, so if we say no to the budget tonight, it goes to the county? And the county makes the determination as to other, our budget... And that's the preliminary budget that we had sent originally, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then they're the ones that make the determination. What happens after that?
They'll send us a letter with their determination. But we haven't gotten our CUSAC letter either, and not approving the budget is an eight-point reduction in governance on CUSAC. And they have the ability to reduce our CUSAC score also.
Okay, so let's go to the next step. If they reduce our CUSAC score, what does that mean to the district?
Depends on where the other things are. Because CUSAC covers four different areas. So if you don't have a passing score...
80 would be passing. 80 would be passing in each area. It depends on how much above passing you are now. Does that put you below 80, or does it keep you above 80? We haven't seen the scores yet, I couldn't tell you.
Let's play devil's advocate. Let's say this is going to put us under... This will totally mess up our score, and it'll mess up our district. Please tell me, enlighten all of us, what will happen?
So you will no longer be an efficient district.
What does that mean?
Well, it depends on what the state determines, whether they want to start doing CUSAC on an annual basis until they feel that you're now efficient again, or whether they determine that the problem is large enough to bring in a state monitor.
Do we lose any money by this? Will we be punished fiscally in any way, shape, or form?
Well, it depends on the way you look at it. If you bring in a state monitor, you have no longer... You won't have any more control over what your expenditures are, because they will basically tell you how to spend your money. And there'll be the additional expense of the state monitor.
We pay for that? We have to pay for the monitor as well, for us? What kind of cost would that be?
What kind of cost? I can't tell you. I don't know whether it depends on your budget or not, but it could be substantial. They usually get, I don't know, about $800 a day?
It's hundreds of dollars a day. The question is how many days that they're here for a week.
Is that for the entire fiscal year? Is that...
It's for as long as they want them to.
It could be for many years. It doesn't have to be one year. Depends on them. Basically lose control. I have a question. In the insert, number 23, there are 10 unaffiliated board office unit personnel. Could you tell me, are there specific job titles there? Yes, there's specific responsibilities. And at one time, there were more, like 20 of them. And we've reduced them, we've consolidated assignments, we've... What year were there 20 of them? Probably before I got here, 10 years ago, 11 years ago. The last... Since my tenure here, I would say we've eliminated at least three positions. And we've rewritten job descriptions. The most recent one was last year, we lost a high school secretary. We took on some of the responsibilities there. And we created a position in central office that was two positions consolidated into one. So we have been looking for efficiencies over the years. We're at the point now where we don't have any cross-training. Cross-training is limited. So the problem that creates is that if you do have someone that's out sick for any length of time, there's nobody to pick up the slack. We used to have people that were cross-trained in payroll. We used to have people that were cross-trained in attendance. And we just don't have the ability to do any in-depth overlap any longer, because we don't have the people that can do that. Barbara, how many unaffiliated board office unit personnel are assigned to the VA in the budget? The business office is one. Two. Three. Four. Four to the business office. Mr. Novak, how many are assigned to the Director of Education office?
Two.
Dr. McQuade, how many are assigned?
One.
How many are assigned to the superintendent?
Zero. She's not.
She's not. Thank you.
Those unaffiliated, a couple different spots.
But do all of them do work for everyone in the board office, or...
Well, they have assigned roles. I have one person that's responsible for attendance of all staff, tracking all the staff for New Jersey Smart, and dealing with all the applications for any personnel that comes in. I have another individual that's responsible for all the insurance that we have, the insurance programs, submitting claims to the insurance carriers. She's also the liaison to the food service. She handles all of the free and reduced applications for students. And she also is the liaison for transportation. So she handles a lot of the expenditures for transportation. Another individual who's responsible for payroll benefits and workman's compensation. And one other individual who's responsible for accounts payable. So all of the purchase orders, all of the checks, all of the monthly bills. I don't know how you overlap any of that.
Mr. Novak, the two people that you have, what are their responsibilities?
To be perfectly honest, I don't even know where to begin with that question. I could tell you that my administrative assistant manages, if you can give me the million-dollar amount of federal grants. I typically manage four federal grants each year. This year, I managed not only four federal grants, I was tasked with three more large federal grants. federal grants, multimillion dollar grants, which basically has been a full-time job itself, along with the other day-to-day operations of the education office, doing parent phone calls, setting up meetings, all of those, all of those things that we, that we do. Another assistant took on the entire role of testing coordinator, which at one time was a testing coordinator secretary, which was at one time a full-time position here in the district not too long ago, along with the support of our administrators of the high school in our English and language arts and math for encore students, invitations, those types of things. As you have been, I guess systematically reducing leadership and supervisor roles in the district over the last, as long as I've been here, my office has picked up a lot of that slack, and we're dealing with purchase orders and instructional materials, presentations, you know, everything that goes with running the educational program in the district. This past year, I assumed the role of K through five supervisor of all instructional, instructional materials, supplies, professional development, planning, textbooks, et cetera, and that has been picked up by the administrative assistant, who also took on the role of the full-time testing coordinator secretary. So I could probably go here all night. If you'd like me to do another explanation at Ed Committee when I'm, when I'm prepared for that question, I'd be, I'd be happy to do so. But I think what I just explained is a pretty elaborate amount of work.
And I could add to that, because she's also responsible for tuition reimbursement and tracking all of the tuition requests that we get for our graduate school, for our teacher, and she also does the...
Provisional teacher, when we have to, you know, move a teacher from a certificate with advanced standing toward their standard certificate. There's a process that takes a lot of tracking. The piece that, I don't know how, I forgot this piece, but it's really management of our entire evaluation system across the district, the database that we do that, keeping track of who's, who's evaluated. Every staff member in this district gets two evaluations and a summative. All of this has to be reported to the state. As this meeting goes, I'll just keep popping in all the...
Federal grant reimbursements have to be done on a monthly basis, otherwise...
Collecting timesheets for everybody who does an after-school.
Well, so I, I think the best analogy, the best analogy of the business office is we're in the business of running an education. That's, we're, we're in the business of running the school district. So think of a corporation. Central Office is your corporation that's running your school district. We're responsible for compliance, ethics compliance, we're responsible for that, making sure that we keep everybody out of trouble. We're responsible for following all of the laws in ATA and all of the code in 6N. So that's what our job is.
Civil rights upload at the end of the year.
Can I just, can I just say something, Mr. Novak and Ms. Francisco, because I think as a district, we've been doing an administrative team, we've been doing more with less, and the one thing I don't want to, I don't want to make it seem like any of these people do something just individually or divided, because we really work as a team, and everyone picks up slack for one another, so even something like professional development overlaps for special needs too. So everything is, is intertwined, where as it's been cutting and these people have stepped up and they've added more to their plate, but I, I, I just don't want us to lose sight of, of what, of the immense detail that goes into each of their positions, and we obviously didn't come with each of their, their list of, I don't...
Two years ago, we reduced the transportation secretary to a part-time position, and it became so problematic that we had to bring it back to a full-time position, because there's just no way that they can handle the volume of work.
I apologize, the conversation went that way. I wasn't looking for job descriptions, I just wanted to know numbers. So to continue with my questions, in the general fund expenses, we did discuss a dollar amount, we discussed the administration dollar amount. The increase of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars, that's what was discussed.
Right.
Okay. So my next question is this, are the unaffiliated board unit personnel in that amount?
They're one of the line items, yes.
Okay. Are the secretarial and building aid personnel in that line item also?
No.
Okay.
Yes, they are. Oh, yes, they are. They're in two forty, yes, they are. Along with the technicians, which I mentioned the last time, along with the principals and vice principals?
What does two forty mean? I'm sorry.
It's the expenditure line.
Got it, thank you.
We also cut watermelon and hand out ice pops to STEM camp.
Anyone else have a question?
I think I also spoke to about the increases in insurance that are also incorporated into the administrative costs.
That is in the administrative costs?
Yes, it is. Not health, not health benefits, but the bonds and the student liability insurance and the, you know, for errors in admissions and to, if, if the district gets sued, that all comes out of there.
That's not having what we have as far as insurance increases as far as our health.
No, that does not have anything to do with that. It's just your general liability insurance to run the district.
Right. Any other questions?
I'd just like to make this statement after, you know, making a joke. I don't really feel like making jokes right now is a really great idea, considering that as a volunteer, I'm here, away from my family for another night, talking about a budget that I thought we were pretty direct. I thought this board said what we wanted. It wasn't a sacrificial lamb on an agenda in a circus.
You did not say what you wanted, because there was no vote on it. If you're going to have a public hearing, you just can't put stuff out there. You have to have a motion, a second, and you have to say, "I want to reduce the budget by this much money." There was none of that.
Can I take exception to the joke comment?
Yeah.
I've been hearing for months that we don't have any student contact, so that is not true. And I was called a liar at the last meeting, and I don't appreciate that either.
Any other discussion on the budget? No? You, do you have one? You're up.
Do we have to vote first and then?
Well, you can...
Make a motion. So what to cut?
No, it has to be part of the resolution, because it gets finalized.
So we can make a motion now?
Sure.
To cut, to what you want cut?
No, you tell me how much you want to cut from the budget. You don't tell us where the cut has to come from, unless you say specifically, "You want to reduce the expenditures for blah, blah, blah." But normally, because the resolution is for general fund, you say, "I want to reduce the general fund by so much money," and you need to let me know whether it's coming from fund balance, or whether it's coming from the tax levy, because that's going to change the resolution.
So you're saying I can make a motion to cut the general fund? Make sure I get this right.
What, what's your intention?
I want to make a motion, you said to cut the general fund by a certain amount to reduce the tax levy, let's say.
Okay.
Right? So I want to make a motion to cut the general fund by one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars to reduce the tax levy. That's what you're saying. That's my motion.
I'll second that. Discussion? It's the amount of...
One hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
So in essence, what Mr. Guarino just did was cut the change, the increase in the administration costs?
No, so what I think what I did was I only gave a dollar amount, right? You can choose to do what you want with that.
Any other discussion on the motion? To cut one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That was presented by Mr. Gore Guarino, submitted by Mrs. Dwyer.
I just have a question for Barbara. So does Mr. Guarino or anyone else from the board have to at this point identify what specific...
No, that's what she said.
Okay.
This resolution is for the district budget.
Right.
It has different funds, you can't cut debt service, you can't cut special revenue, so you have to cut the general fund. You want to reduce the general fund by that amount of money, and you want it to reduce your tax levy by that same amount of money.
And I will just say, I had called and asked that question, I think, yesterday, that you helped clarify that for me, so I understood that, yeah, it would be anything, right, that could be pulled from any area.
Okay. So, right now, we're voting on the motion, we're not voting on the budget right now. We're just voting on the reduction of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine. Any other discussion on the motion for reduction? If not, roll call on that.
Mr. Compton? Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
No.
Okay, so now the budget number is going to change by that amount, correct? I'll give you a minute to tell me what that new number is.
From seventy-two, six, seven, zero, seven, five, one.
Could you repeat that, Barb?
Seventy-two, six, seven, zero, seven, five, one.
And the total budget is seventy-four, forty-five, seven, six, sixty-four?
Seventy-two.
Total budget. She gave me the general fund. She gave the general, because we was reducing the general fund, so she took that money out of the general fund first, and then she's going to add those together to come up with the total.
And then it'll be a different number.
And then she all, she's figuring out what the new tax levy is.
No, I'm still trying to figure it out. So, general fund will be seventy-two million, six hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, and the total budget will be seventy-four million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Tax levy for the general fund will be fifty-nine million, seven hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars, and the total tax levy will be sixty million, zero, one, five, zero, three, three.
So if I...
Go ahead.
So the change, instead of the one point one seven three million, now it's one point zero four, four million, right? The local tax levy? I'm just going by what Alex had.
Oh, you're looking at something else.
I'm just looking at a sheet, I'm just trying to do simple math from what Alex gave us.
Or on, on the, on the taxing tax...
So, yeah, it shows like the local tax levy with the number we gave us.
Right.
You should track that by that amount.
So the, so the percent change obviously also went down, was that like one point eight instead of one point, instead of two point?
I'd have to figure it out.
I mean, I just figured it out, simple math, I mean, I don't know if I'm not, not...
Probably, it's probably like one point eight, or, or thereabouts.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the budget?
What does that do to next year's budget?
Well, it just gives you a little bit more room to increase your tax levy over two percent.
Right, that carries over, right?
Right.
Go ahead, Courtney.
I don't know if this is the right place to ask, but I think it is. So things like that were discussed last time, attorney's fees, is that where we would discuss this now?
No, because you're, you want to reduce our mid, our, our tax levy. You are not reducing the budget expenditure lines.
It's not a line item, is what she's saying, right?
You're reducing the overall budget by one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Thank you.
But I want to get this understanding, we can approve this budget tonight, and we can still ask for reductions of other things after the budget. And we can still ask for reductions of other things after the budget. Like, in other words, if we said to you, um, you know, we want to cut, we want to eliminate a position, all right?
For easy.
I don't want elimination. That's a horrible, excuse me, that would be a very bad thing to say. But if we wanted to eliminate something after the vote of the budget, if we were in agreement, we could do that. We could make the motion to do that.
Well, you, you have personnel on the agenda, so you can certainly not renew personnel. But as far as the other expenses within the budget, the time to have reduced them is past.
Okay. Because we approved the preliminary about that.
And there was multiple weeks of, opportunities of discussion.
I think we've discussed it a lot, you know, what we as a board had hoped that they were going to cut.
Any other discussion, Kate?
If this budget is voted down, I think I heard tonight, and I just want to clarify, is that then tomorrow goes to the county, not the state monitors that come in and take away everyone's freedom, right? Or it goes to the county and then they come back with probably a preliminary budget. Or an idea of when does the state come in monitoring?
It, the, the trigger.
When you go into a deficit, you're not in a deficit.
Right.
I think the whole concept of where the budget is going, because we've been able to sustain what we have because of the infusion of federal funds that we've had due to COVID. If we're, we're looking to restructure for next year, if that doesn't happen, you won't have the money to sustain what you have now. You have four million dollars that you have put into this budget to keep things moving forward. But there are a lot of things that the grant money is supporting that we are not going to have the money for next year. So the way you see your, this past weekend, I read an article about a school district in Sussex County where a council person just had a meltdown. And the meltdown was because they're being cut, as we are. And they're cutting art, and they're cutting music, and they're cutting extracurricular activities in order to maintain their school district. Yet the inner cities, the abbots, or formerly known as abbots, have all of those things plus. And you're not seeing the bang for your bucks, because that's your tax dollars. So what road are you going down? You're going down the road where you're going to have to cut. You're going to have to cut program. And you can't afford to cut your special ed program because pay me now, pay me later is going to end up going up because you're going to be, you don't have the personnel here to support the students that you have. So then you're going to have to send them out of district. You have no control over the education they're receiving when you send them out of district. So we're doing everything administratively that we can to maintain what people are so happy is going on in West Milford. And it's not going to happen in the future. And I keep saying it, and I don't really know how else to, to phrase it. I mean, the state monitors will come in if next year you don't have the money to pay for the health insurance and the transportation costs and any other unforeseen things that might arise. Or the diesel fuel, that we don't even have enough money in the budget to pay for gas. We didn't have enough, we were transferring money in order to cover our natural gas costs for the buildings, because the heating season has been extended so much.
I, I think there is a little confusion though. Because when we were talking, I think when you were explaining to Debbie about the, the budget, the CUSAC number plays into this. It, that, I think that's what you're asking. Is there a trigger? If the CUSAC number drops down, does that then tell us, well, your, a monitor's coming in because you can't meet CUSAC?
No, 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 because a monitor goes along with a deficit.
That's what I thought, but that's not how I, I, I'm not the only one who knows that way.
You're talking two different things. Monitoring and CUSAC is different than the state monitoring you're talking about now.
Yeah.
State fiscal monitor, which Barbara's talking about, for CUSAC, if your score goes under eighty, it would trigger some other.
Yeah.
You may get a CUSAC.
Yeah, all those things keep coming, yeah, but that doesn't mean an individual is going to come back. You know, you have stuff like that. You have to create a corrective action plan in order to show improvement. But the fiscal monitor, when you go into a deficit, and I believe that's what Mr. Sidewash was also referencing, is that when you go into a fiscal deficit, because you don't have the money to pay the bills, that's when the fiscal monitor comes in.
Mr. Garino.
So, yeah, I know you're talking about this, and we've talked about this extensively too, about the money that's being taken from the more rural areas, right? And infusing that into other school systems. Is there a consortium of, we've written letters and so forth, but is there a consortium of superintendents, BAs, that go down to Trenton on a regular basis to talk, fight about these things? Or is it just sending letters?
It doesn't seem to be, it doesn't seem to be falling on deaf ears perhaps, by the most diplomatic way of saying it, so.
It's falling on deaf ears there?
Yes.
I don't anticipate any changes.
No, there's no change. They say that we're going to continue with S2. They know that is creating problems. You find more and more school districts that are now looking at, um, taking the grant money from the state in order to review consolidation.
But when you're, so, when you were in front of somebody, as tonight, I don't know how many board meetings we've had with nobody sitting there or three people sitting here, right? When you're in front of somebody, that may help, it may help make a difference. And that's what I'm saying, is there a group of the?
Perry, go ahead, because you have enough chance to speak.
Alex, I was under the impression last year when, when you spoke, that there was a group called SOS Save Our Schools with parents. Has that been publicized? And, um, you know, have you out, have you reached out to parents in the district to help us with this, or?
So the SOS group is statewide, and it was all the districts essentially that were losing state aid, large amount of state aid. Problem, and we did make a push, and it has since petered out. I don't know that it's really going anyplace. There are simply more districts getting state aid that are being cut. So from a political perspective, you're taking money from a hundred fifty districts and you're giving it to four hundred districts. So you have more winners than losers on the, on your balance sheet. So, and if you add up the population of those winners and losers, there are four more, four more people living in the four hundred districts that are getting state aid that are living in the one hundred fifty districts like West Milford. So from a politician's standpoint, I think this is something they look at as being a positive for themselves. Doesn't, it's not positive for West Milford, Vernon, Sussex County, or any place up here. But it's positive for the people who are initiating this, this plan. So there are simply more people who want it than don't want it, I think, at this point. We can write a letter. I don't know if it's going to make a difference. We can drive to Trenton. I don't know if it's going to make a difference. We've met with our, both our assembly persons, our state senator, county commissioner, I believe has been brought up. I, I don't believe it's, I would love to do that. I don't think it's going to have any effect.
But have we continually met with them, or was it a one-shot deal and that was it? Have we pushed? Have we really, really pushed?
I believe we have. I, I don't know that it's going anyplace. I mean, even in our local representatives, in their large district, there are many districts they represent, many communities that are getting state aid. So it's very difficult for those politicians to not support something that's benefiting a large part of their district. Now, there's just redistricting this year for New Jersey State Assembly and State Senate. So I think West Milford's getting moved again into another district. So that changes who we have to reach out to as well. But like I said, it's, it's just, I, I think we're just in it for another two years. I don't see anything this board can do to really change that. It's, um, it's disheartening. I just think that's the, the honest answer. We could tell everybody, we're going to write letters, and we're going to go get them, but I, I don't believe it's going to have any effect.
But, but what I am going to say is, we still keep advocating. We don't stop. And those deaf ears may suddenly turn into ears that are listening. The one thing that I've learned over my career and even being the CPAC rep in this district for so many years is you just keep going at what you feel you need to do. And even though people aren't listening, you don't stop.
Then I have hope. You guys keep pushing.
Exactly.
I, I feel, I feel too that we're kind of on that precipice, you know? Because now all the other districts that are similar to us, that have lost so much money, are sitting doing this right now. They're, they're saying, how are we going to, how are we going to fund all the programs next year? Because we don't want to hurt anybody, you know? No one here wants to see somebody hurt. But we also have to be conscious that next year, there could be another, there could very well be two million dollars more. And there isn't a four million dollar surplus sitting, you know? There's not four million dollars there that we can use. We took our one four million dollar shot and we shot it. So now we have to, I, I think what we're doing tonight is trying to be cautious in what we do here, so that next year, we can do, still continue to do what we need to do for everyone. And those are never easy decisions. Nobody's sitting here and saying, oh gee, this can go, this can go. I, I would like to say, I want everything to stay. I don't want to change anything. I hope we could get more, you know? But realistically, sitting here, we have to face, it's like being home. You know, if you only have a hundred and fifty-two dollars and your bills are a hundred and fifty-three dollars, you got to figure out where you're going to get that other dollar. And Barbara's right, we don't want to be in a deficit where the state comes in and then they start to tell us how to run this district. So I, I, you know, I think we all, we all have concerns and no one, I don't believe any person here is sitting here wanting to do damage to this district at all. This is everybody's true concern. I don't feel any one of us sitting around this table or questioning without good, their good heart trying to figure it out. Ray?
Just a side question. Do you, Alex, you happen to know, I mean, it was before you were here, but our enrollment when we were getting twenty-six percent of our budget was from state aid back in two thousand and two. You know our enrollment was that?
Over four thousand students.
It was.
I mean, our. Okay, I'll give you the numbers, but that's probably four thousand.
Three thousand, three hundred, so probably eight hundred, two thousand more students.
I would say we're at three thousand now, so about a quarter drop.
Definitely over four thousand students. Maybe four, two hundred. That information is available in your board.
Yeah. Again, I don't have it here either. That's what I said. I don't know if you just, get them before you got here. I don't have them.
I, I, I would say though, like, our high school right now is not at nine hundred and thirty-seven students. Back then, I, I would say there were almost sixteen hundred students.
Well, not too bad.
Oh, I, no, back, back when we were getting our full amount, I would say, say the high school was almost sixteen hundred. Because we couldn't, we didn't have enough lockers or anything.
And there were only thirty-five students coming out of PCTI.
But I, I would say we were close. You were in the high school at that point, right? There were, there were, there were a lot, I mean, because we had graduating classes of three ninety-four. I think there were even graduating classes of four hundred at that point. So if you're looking at poor grade levels, reasonably. Any other discussions on the budget? Are you still, you have some other questions? Kate, you have a question?
I do. Um, I have two things. The first is just a statement, I heard a speaker say something like, at the last meeting, something along the lines of that we battled cutting administration costs to save teachers. I don't know that that was ever really the intention, but I believe that the intention was to put on a fair budget, where cuts were seen all across all the disciplines. Um, and I just wanted to make that statement, that it wasn't that we were really, I never got the impression from anyone on this board that anyone was trying to favor one over another. So I wanted to say that. The second thing is, while I have my chance to still discuss this budget hearing, um, I wanted to ask Alex, have you considered or changed, um, the decision for your highly effective teachers that were non-renewed? Have you considered changing those to RIFs? And if, so, can we just discuss that?
No, there's no, there's nothing in here about that. We are not, not changing any for so.
Well, there certainly is something in here on that. There's the proposed cuts. There's six, possibly seven teachers that are getting cut. At the last meeting, you told me they were all non-renewals.
Correct.
It's my understanding that some of them are highly effective teachers in our district. And I'm asking you why we're not ripping them rather than non-renewing them.
It's a more prudent course of action for the district. Uh, you know, my responsibility, my fiduciary responsibilities to the district as a whole, and reducing our budget by this many staff members is never easy. Twelve months from now, this page is going to be a lot bigger. We'll have a lot more cuts. And when you reduce, enforce, or riff, you are required to hire that person back at a later date, or at least offer them the position, and that really limits the district's flexibility. So from the district's perspective, and again, I represent the district, a more prudent course of action is what we did here.
And Mr. Garino, for your information, in two thousand eight, the seven, eight school year, we had four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five students. And in two thousand nine, we had four thousand, two hundred and nine students. So we lost a hundred and seventy-five students that one year. And it's continually decreased.
Yeah, we're right around three thousand now. With considerably more of PCTI. You said twenty-five, thirty-five then?
Well, there, there's, like, this year, we have a hundred students that are, that were paying for tuition. That's not a hundred students from eighth grade moving over. That's a hundred total for all grade levels.
Brings up another question about consortium of superintendents, right? Because the state provides money to county technical schools. And the county provides money to county technical schools. And then every school district provides money to every, right? County technical school. So to your point earlier, right? You may have less, now you probably have, there's twenty, what, twenty-one, twenty-two counties, five hundred and thirty or so school districts. I'm guessing you have five hundred and something school districts that you might be able to get together with. Say, why do we have to keep paying this when the state pays you, the county pays you?
Well, not every county operates as Passaic County Tech does.
Ah, interesting.
Some county go techs allow half-day.
And some, and some have no tuition.
Go to go tech in the morning and then get bused back to your local high school for the afternoon and for athletics or something like that. So Passaic County Tech does not permit half-day enrollment, just full-time or not at all. That's something we've always been pushing, but, you know, again, it's people who.
You got every town in Passaic County, right? That they could probably be on your side, and there's one school district that would not be.
Right. And we don't have any influence over their, their budget, their coordination, their operation, how they run their businesses.
Bergen County, Bergen County Tech has a slower tuition than Passaic County.
Do they still, I, I wonder if they still do a part-time program? Because some of, some of the schools in Bergen, they do the morning, do your, maybe it's different because it's academy now.
I don't think that.
Right, worst county.
Yeah, it's academy now, that's the difference.
I don't think that that work-study type program or that, that part-time program has been in effect for quite some time.
But we did, what you're speaking, I agree with, with Ray, is because we did have a meeting with some of Passaic County schools that are losing. And it would be wise to push forward with the superintendents to continue that, because we are not alone in Passaic County out of loss, because we did learn that Manchester lost, loses four hundred and some kids everywhere. So that's a big loss to them. And they still are getting state funding because of where, you know, because of their enrollment. But they're, they're. But they're, they're losing a lot of kids.
Yeah.
So I, I think that that would be a good idea for the superintendents to meet and try to organize something. And even with the, with politicians, because this is a lot of money that everybody's losing out of their budget every year. And, you know, enrollment's going down here, and they go down in other places too, so.
Barbara, what are we paying again? Passaic County, is it right around $1 million? Which is basically, which is basically our tax levy, right?
Yes.
Budget?
Yes.
Courtney? I have one more question, getting back to what trustee Romeo was talking about with the proposed cuts. Are administrators, do they fall under getting categorized as reduced in reduction of force or RIF, or non-renewables, sorry? Do they have that same category as teachers? I just am curious, I just wasn't sure.
You mean like a non-renewable?
Are they, are administrators considered under both categories, non-renewable or RIF?
Well, you could either non-renewed administrator or you could RIF administrator. At any standard.
So these teachers that are highly effective, that were non-renewed, if we have administrators that are non-renewed, but they are highly effective, that doesn't look great. And going forward, there's gonna be a lot more proposed cuts with teachers and administrators, unfortunately. And making them non-renewables, I don't think is right.
Any other discussion on the budget? Not? Time for the vote, Barbara.
Okay, so we're voting on it.
They're voting on the amended numbers for the budget. Number one.
Okay.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I would like to move two through the board.
Second. Discussion? I have one question. Blackboard again, that's the new website, right? Is it?
Yes, that's the hosting services for the new website.
I just wanted to clarify that. Any other discussion under operations and finance, items two, three, and four? Ropa?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Personnel, Student Affairs. Oh, I'm sorry.
Number five.
I wonder how I forgot.
Would you move number two?
This is hand carried. I don't have a hand carry.
Three.
Okay, I'm sorry, give it to Mr. Stillman.
Would you move to hand carried number four?
Second. Any discussion? I just want to say that this is, I don't know how it could be sustainable for districts going forward. This economy right now is, is so bad, and to almost double the cost of a bus run, we, we couldn't, and we've had discussions, we couldn't even run the buses if we could, if we had, we couldn't even do it in-house because we don't have enough buses or drivers. And this is just a small item that's gonna impact us going forward in such a negative, our fund balance in a negative way, the cost, the increase of doubling almost.
Are there transportation grants available from the state and the government? Only if you want to use electric buses, maybe. Sorry.
We're perfectly in this.
Any other discussion?
Besides putting the batteries in to charge them every night, could you imagine them trying to go up water with thermite?
In the snow. Any other discussions? If not, Ropa?
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Garino? Personnel, Student Affairs.
So, hand carried, just here. I'd like to move items one through 49 under Personnel and Student Affairs.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Stillman?
Can we, uh, say one, please?
I'm making a motion to pay.
I'm making a motion to pay.
Second.
Number two?
Nineteen.
On grade two.
Ray, you seconded that? Do I need a roll call vote on that? All those in favor for table in nine? Any opposed? Any other discussion under Personnel? Mr. Garino?
So, we have more teachers under resignations recently?
Retirements. And resignations, yes, there are resignations, right?
Now, why that continues to happen?
We are losing people. Do you have a question, Annie? Kate, you have a question?
Have we done any exit interviews on those people that are...
I did one, I could do a couple more though.
Well, I feel like the board is really directed that we want exit interviews. Am I, if I'm speaking out of turn, I, I feel like we're losing many people, and we need to know why. And just because the, the response that they're getting more money or they're moving closer to home is not flying, because we're not, that's not the feedback. Debbie, you have a question?
No, I have a con, oh, yeah, maybe it's a question, I don't know. I thought during discussion in Personnel the other day, when I, we had brought that up, and I think I'm the one that brought that up, that it was said to us as a, as a group, that phone calls were made. I don't know if they would technically be considered exit interviews, but the staff, the administration, administrators did do that. So I don't know where is it, did you do one? Did you do more than one? Did some people did more than others? I don't know. So I'm, I'm, we really look like exit interviews, we're losing, we're losing people, we need to know why.
All right, okay, I'll get that, I'll take care of that.
I would like to just clarify for the Board of Education, because many of the motions on here are my resignations in the area of special services. So I did share with Ms. O'Brien and the other committee members that everyone that has resigned, we have, from special services followed up to, like, just personally ask, you know, the why question. But I know Dr. Edmond said he would also do official exit interviews.
We didn't see that.
Yeah, that's what, I know, wasn't it, yeah, it was kind of in that extra discussion part.
Have any of them sent letters to the administration or explaining why they were leaving?
Do they send a resignation?
They send a resignation letter.
Two sent, right?
Anybody on tonight's agenda that sent like a letter?
No, just a date of actual resignation, I guess.
So they don't put the, no, you did not receive a letter from someone on this agenda tonight resigning with the reasons why they're resigning? That's my question, very specific.
Not, not that I recall, unless you've seen a letter, but I have not seen a letter with specifics in it. Like I said, I, I try to make that a personal touch with reaching out to people to then just kind of find out what's going on, or usually and typically when someone also resigns, for the most part, people, and we have good people, they usually will come and explain to you kind of like, hey, this is the situation. And they usually give at least special services a heads up as to, you know, what might be coming in the next couple of days. Or they might be waiting on an agenda to be approved and things like that.
Discussions anymore, does anybody have any other questions? I want to say I wish Mindy Turner and Debbie Van Zyle a healthy, happy retirement. And we are sad to see them go. And Iris, our Iris, I, I will miss Iris, and I just wish her nothing but good health and happiness. She is a redheaded firecracker that we deeply love. So I do wish her well. If not, and no other discussion? If not, Ropa?
Mr. Garino?
Epstein on 20, 21, 25, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No on 20 and 21, yes on everything else.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Okay, just want to, just want to clarify, 19 has been pulled at this point.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Epstein on 20, 21, 24, 25, and 37, yes to everything else.
Epstein on 20, 21, 35?
24, 25, and 37. You need it one more time?
No. 20, 21, 24, 25, 37?
You got it.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Okay, I'm going to abstain on 20 and 21 and 25. Yes for everything else. Mrs. Dwyer? Okay, education. I'd like to move items one through eight in Education, and number nine will be voted on for upper executive session. Second. Discussion? If not, Ropa, Barbara?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yeah.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson, policy, please.
I'd like to make a motion to move numbers one through four under policy.
Second. Discussion? If not, Ropa?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr.? Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Public comment? This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. Then time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected and identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment? Come on forward.
You have to sign again?
No.
With that 100,000, Will Seidowitz, Macbin Road, with the 100-plus thousand that was cut tonight, I have no idea what was accomplished. Please, 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 really think this through going forward. I don't know what you, what damage you're gonna end up doing in terms of the fund balance going forward for next year, but, you know, learn how this process works. And really get a grasp, because you are a year or two away from a totally different district, and you will be dissing a lot of teachers' jobs goodbye. So if you don't understand something, learn it. There's plenty of NJ SBA opportunities to do so, but please, this district is, it's gonna be on life support in two years if this board doesn't understand the process and doesn't do the right things in short order. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I need a motion to close, uh, public comment.
Should I make a motion to close?
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we need a motion, Terry, for executive session, and we will be back, we will return for action.
All right, at 8:54, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, HIB negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer acceptable and, or applicable, and we will return after executive session for action.
Second. All those in favor? We will be...
45 minutes.
45, is that enough? Okay, 45 minutes, thank you. I'd like to bring the meeting back to order. Barbara, could you do the roll call, please?
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mr. Garino?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer? Okay, I'd like to move to approve the recommendation superintendent to do the following regarding the HIB. 2022 H9 postponed for further information. 2000, I think it's supposed to be 22, H10 postponed for further information, and 2022 E5 as substantiated. I need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Now, under Personnel, Student Affairs, Mr. Garino?
I'd like to make a motion to move item 19 under Personnel and Student Affairs.
Second. Discussion? Ropa?
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstain.
Mr. Garino?
No.
Mrs. Lockwood?
No.
Mrs. O'Brien?
No.
No.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
No.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
No.
That one fails. I need a motion to adjourn.
9:58, we can make a motion to adjourn.
All those in, I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.